Sacramento City Council Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority to order. We're going, we are meeting tonight pursuant to Governor's executive order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty, pursuant to which the West Sacramento City Council and our staff are participating in the meeting by a live teleconference. But to reduce the spread of COVID-19, members of the public have been asked to participate in the meeting by watching the livestream at the city's website or on wave cable channel twenty and to submit comments in writing to the city clerk by six o'clock each evening. Those comment, all public comments are provided directly to member, each member of the city council, and they're also available in their entirety to every member of the public on the city's website, right as part of the agenda item and video for this meeting. The council did not have a closed session this evening, so we're going to proceed directly to item one A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the city council. And of course, do we have comments on item one A?
Yes, we received public comments for this item.
All right, thank you. And again, those comments are available on the city website right next to the agenda in the video for this meeting. All right, we'll proceed then to item one B, which is council communications or the reports or other communications from the liaison of statements on our agenda, Councilmember Guerrero.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have an update to share. Yolo Habitat Conservancy met on July twentieth, and in their meeting, there was an approval of the Yolo Regional Conservation Investment Strategy, the local conservation plan, and the Associated Memorandum of Understanding with the California Department of Water Resources. And this was a significant undertaking so that there is a consolidated method of approving development plans. There will be some additional work with the Department of Water Resources as we look forward to implementing this plan. And also, we approved a sole source contract with GeoCon Consultants for on-call geotechnical and environmental services. And in addition, I just want to add that this was our first meeting under the county, Yolo County administration, and they did an excellent job in managing the meeting. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Other reports or communications this evening under item one B?
Mayor?
Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good to see everyone again. Just wanted to quickly update. I did have participate this afternoon with staff or transportation planning staff member Sarah Strand. We held our Mobility Action Plan Workshop. It was held online, not a Zoom call, but an interactive call online. And I was lucky enough to participate and introduce it, but it was really an interactive workshop where we outlined our goals of the map, talked about how this is an important part of planning for this, and we even have an agenda item that kind of contributes to it in a few. And planning for these types of mobility options, transportation options, this is the really optimum time to be doing that. So it was about, lasted about an hour. I think we had about fifteen people sign into it, which is really great, asked some good questions about active transportation or just biking concerns and questions about the kind of where we're going with either light rail or streetcar. So some really good interactions. I want to thank the public who took the time to log in in the middle of the afternoon and provide some feedback. And I know Sarah's pushing forward and we'll get that comment, those comments back out to us. So that was a really good session. I want to thank the public who participated. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. I would just report the Delta Protection Commission met on Thursday, also remotely. And the two principal items that we took up were the Community Design Study for the Delta's legacy communities. This is part of the Delta Act, and so we're developing plans for the that encourage tourism and reduce flood risk and achieve a variety of other public objectives for the legacy communities. Now, the legacy communities of the Delta don't include us, doesn't include any of the large cities. It includes Bethel Island and Cortland and Freeport and Hood and Ileton, Locke, Rio Vista, Ride, Walnut Grove, and Clarksburg. And as Clarksburg is a sort of our adopt, our little sister community to the, to the south. And we've always taken a greater interest there, and it's one of our neighbors in Yolo County. And so the work to preserve, both preserve Clarksburg's community vitality, but also their local economy. And as the council knows, it's a, Clarksburg and many of these legacy communities struggle between trying to be, trying to adapt economically and also preserve their history and their legacy. And that's part of what the, what this community design study is all about. And then second, we heard a report on recreation in the Delta. This is one of the, one of the major objectives that the Delta Act envisions. And recreation is obviously under, under, both under a lot of pressure right now of demand as people want to be out on the Delta, in the Delta. And at the same time, many of the businesses in the Delta that support that recreation are in particularly tough straits due to, due to the virus and the ancillary regulatory effects. And so that's been a challenge, but also the challenge of attracting younger visitors to even be aware that the Delta exists is important. This all, of course, really matters in West Sacramento because we are the gateway city to the Delta. And as the, as the council knows, you know, the, a lot of signs have been going up, actually mainly in West Sacramento so far, denoting the first segments of the Great Delta Trail, which ultimately will extend from Sacramento and West Sacramento all the way down the Delta to the Bay Area. So it's, it's, once that is built, completely built out, it's going to be an extraordinary, you know, world-renowned trail resource. But even the component pieces of which we are contributing a lot here in Western are a significant step forward. And then for the US Conference of Makers last Friday, the, the Working Group to Disrupt Systemic Racism that I, council's aware, I'm co-chairing with the Mayor of Atlanta, finalized its first rounds of revisions to the, to the vision statement around, around the organization's overall objectives and advocacy program, including issues like CDBG and access to capital. But this, this, this time, because of the, the work of our group, really trying to also get to the systemic issues that are, that are involved about their racial experience of black and native and people of color in our, in our communities nationwide. And so there is more of a focus on redlining and the effect, effects of exclusionary zoning on fines in the justice system and their impacts on, on incarceration. So a wide range of issues that the Mayor of Atlanta and I and others have been taking on and try to, try to tackle some of these issues that we certainly feel here in our local community, but they require a much larger effort to solve. They're, they're a little bit beyond the pay scale of us locally, but they certainly have impacts in the equity that our residents feel and that they enjoy and the safety and security that they feel as well. So it's important that we tackle them, but it's, but we can only do that with help of other cities as well. That's been a positive effort. All right, so seeing no other communication assignments, we don't have appointments this evening. So we're going to proceed to item two, which is presentation of the proclamation recognizing the thirtieth anniversary of the enactment of Americans with Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety. So first of all, is there a motion on the proclamation?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, so it's going to move by Councilmember Guerrero and second by Councilmember Orozco. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sandin?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin?
Aye.
All right. Megan, were you coming on because we, do we have a presentation to an, to an individual organization to make this evening or?
No, there isn't a presentation. I have a short presentation if you'd like me to do it. We don't have an individual to actually present the proclamation to.
Okay, then we'll defer that. So the, the, our, we have a, our policy is to take these items up when they, and actually, Madam Clerk, at some point, if you wouldn't mind just sharing, so we've had, we've had some membership, you know, new, new members since the council adopted its policies around proclamations a few years back. I think we have two or three new members since that time. So you can share with the, with the members of the council. So the process by which those items get to, get to, get to the council, including the, the provisions around a relationship to a local effort or, or a local organization or local activity, that sort of thing. So the councils, it took this up a while back to, to do this. So in particular, as we're dealing in the, in a virtual environment where we won't have this, we, we won't have as many guests to make presentations to. And it'll be useful to take that up, but appreciate it. So with that, then we'll proceed to the consent agenda, which is items three and four. Either, either item to be removed or for separate consideration or question or comments? Councilmember Guerrero?
Yeah, sorry. Trying to get my hand up here. Yes, if I can move item number four, please. I have a few questions.
All right, for, for a question or to remove?
For questions, please.
All right, anyone else? Okay, then item four is consideration of an agreement with A three Mobility LLC doing business as GIG Car Share to operate an electric car sharing program. Councilmember Guerrero?
Thank you. I was noticing the map on the location of, hi Jason, on the location of the vehicles where they're going to be placed to rent, and I noticed they were pretty much centrally located in one part of the city. And I was hoping to see them expanded citywide. Because I know that, that I anticipate there'll be a lot of interest, but access to that will be limited based on the location. Can you give me a little more insight on if we're not doing it now, when that would happen?
Sure. First, I'd like to introduce Sloan Morgan from GIG. She's here to answer any questions that the council might have, as well as Larry Lee, our parking manager, who can also answer questions related to the parking structure and the fees. There were a number of reasons why we decided to move in this direction. We worked diligently with GIG to identify key areas in West Sacramento that one had already received a number of requests for service, primarily within the fulcrum properties area around Capital Yards and businesses in the Washington District in particular, Calsters, who had requested that service be provided to allow folks who are car light or car free a way to get around, as well as those who are commuting in, who are using GIG that wanted to be able to drop the cars off and go to work. Another reason was that we were looking in particular at disadvantaged community zones. Areas south of the Deepwater Channel are not designated disadvantaged communities. And we wanted to make sure that we're providing a level of equity with, in relation to assets for the program. In addition to that, the funding for GIG was provided through Electrify America. And one of the main things that we had to be cognizant of is that expansion into West Sacramento, which was outside of Sacramento's SAC to Zero campaign area, would require just from Sacramento and Electrify America in order to not dilute the car share program that was currently in place. So the last thing to remember is, as well as that, we wanted to make sure that this was a test case, that our contract allows us to expand into other areas as markets change and that we could be flexible with where these home zones are located if one is not working, that we could close that down and open in another location. If suddenly areas around the Southport Town Center are booming with requests for car share, that it's available to them quickly. So the, we continue to work with GIG. I think the most important thing is that we launched the program so that we can start to develop test cases and see where people are going, where they're coming from, where they're going to, and where the demand is. Perhaps Sloan could elaborate a little bit more, or if there are additional questions, she's here to answer.
Go ahead, Sloan. I think you want to say something.
Hi, everybody. Nice to meet you. I'm Sloan Morgan from GIG Car Share. I thought Jason's answer covered, you know, all the points, probably just starting with the beginning. We want to walk before we run. We, although we are a division of AAA Northern California, we are run as a very lean startup. And so part of our ethos is to really follow member demand. So we have been tracking where members or potential members are calling in, so we wanted to meet that demand right off. We also have, as Jason mentioned, flexibility in the agreement, so we can add and take off these mini, we're, we're calling them mini home zones as appropriate and as needed. We are, you know, we are looking to support all West Sacramento members who want to do EV car share in addition to the, the other, you know, mobility choices they have. So we're just, we're looking for the use cases. We're going to follow those use cases. And I think it's going to take a couple of months to, to learn more. And at that point, we'll, we might be able to report back on some other potential sites.
Okay. And is there a cost to the city for utilization by any chance? I'm scrolling around a lot through the report, but I don't see it.
This is Jason McCoy. As far as the cost, what we tried to do was be neutral so that any revenue associated with the loss of parking for enabling the car share vehicles to park there, that revenue is, is paid for by GIG. So if folks who are parking in a home zone, any of the revenue that would be incurred based on that, that is transferred to GIG. And then we have an auditing system that's built in. Larry Lee could speak a little bit more to that as the parking manager, but we'll ensure that we receive reports on, I believe it's a monthly basis so that we can review how much parking is being utilized and review the revenue coming in from that and making sure that we're, we're staying revenue neutral.
Thank you. And then as far as keeping it sanitized and COVID-free, what, what is the plan for that?
I can, I can speak to that. Yes, that's a great question. So we have been, you know, we're pleased to, to say that we have continued to operate as an essential service during the COVID shelter in place. When it first happened back in March, you know, everybody was, you know, trying to figure things out. So we took the, we voluntarily and temporarily took the entire fleet down, all of the over five hundred cars in the Bay Area, as well as the two hundred and sixty Chevy Bolts in Sacramento. And we had everything cleaned. We already have an amazing steam cleaning, hot steam cleaning method, which is effective. So we cleaned everything and started fresh. So the app right now says if you've been exposed or in contact, please don't get in the car. So that's on the app. We've also added hand sanitizer to the cars. We also see the GIG community as a strong community, and we're all trying to keep each other safe. You can imagine that we're a member-centric organization being AAA. So that is, of course, our top priority. Nothing else matters besides that and our team. So we also have really done a lot of communication with our members, saying, hey, when you get in the car, of course, wear a mask and then touch with your own hand sanitizer, the five top touch points. And then lastly, we have, I guess, two more things. We have, whenever anybody, one of our crew or one of our employees goes to touch a car, meaning they need to fuel it or move the car, they also use the hand sanitizer on all of these areas. And then lastly, if there were an issue with COVID, because we have access to all of the tow trucks, we basically just would, we would put a car up on the tow truck, take it away, quarantine it. That's an example of a very robust protocol that we're ready to enable as needed. So all of those things, we've been able to maintain very high customer satisfaction through these last, you know, unfortunately, many months. So I think we are, we're just gonna, I mean, unfortunately for us, it's resulted in a lot more expense. But we're, we're really pleased that the confidence, the member confidence has stayed high, and that's, that's really important to us.
That's good. Thank you, Sloan. And just one more question. I was looking at the reviews because you started out in Sacramento. Some really good ones, people really happy with it. And others were just around additional costs that, that people may not have read through the contract. And also using the app, just some difficulty accessing it. And I just want to make sure that we have ease of access and full disclosure, just if people are not surprised by an additional tacked-on costs.
There, there could be a parking ticket. So parking tickets are probably the hardest to communicate. You, you cannot park the car within twelve hours of any street sweeping.
I see.
If you park fourteen hours, no problem. If you park twelve hours and two minutes, no problem. We know exactly when the trips end. So that is very difficult to communicate and educate members. Don't say this, you know, out loud. Of course, I'm, I'm saying that with a little bit of a wink, but we always let the first ticket go through. If it's something horrendous like parking in a red zone, that's probably not the case. Everybody should know not to park in a red zone. We have had some examples like that, but in general, we've really tried to be flexible. We've worked with the city. The twelve-hour issue is the biggest number of tickets. We work with Mike King every month, and we review the kinds of tickets. And then we address our marketing to try to educate along that, along those lines. We have pop-ups in the app. So it's, it is, parking is probably the area that's still a little bit of friction. If there was another complaint about cell phone, we have, we have just made some new app updates. So I think our cell phone reception is a lot better, but you do want to have Bluetooth on. That makes everything better if you have Bluetooth on as, as well.
Good to know. Thank you. Thank you so much, and thank you for this opportunity.
Well, we're thrilled. We're really thrilled.
Yeah, thank you, Sloan. I, I, we're, we're not here as regulatory agency. This is a, this is a really important step forward in the portfolio of transportation options and mobility options that our residents have. And, 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 and as, as Jason noted, we've had a lot of residents who've been waiting and anticipating and hoping that, that we would have car share service here. And GIG's obviously at the, at the top of the class in this, in this one. So I'm glad we were able to make this work. We're not providing any, any subsidies. We didn't get a grant. This has to work as a, as a, as a, as a, as a business venture. And we're not, we're not the Congress, so we, we can't just tell you operate in every possible place without, even if it doesn't work. So you're making the right decisions, and I appreciate Jason and the work of our staff, working with you to accomplish, to make sure that we have a service that can be economically viable so that it can expand to serve more parts of the city, but that you prioritize the places that need to, that need to be prioritized because they will be the most successful. So one of those being paying attention to what our land use plan is and matching up with our general plan and our emerging districts in the city where we have built less parking and higher levels of density. And that is based on those, on residents in those, in those districts having access to a broader portfolio of transportation options. So for them, it's not GIG car share versus a car. It's GIG car share plus other forms of mobility, plus transit, plus walking and biking. Hopefully, again, plus bike share and scooters. Right? The entire range of mobility options has to be available to them in order for it to work. And so we often talk in, we've often talked to council about, you know, that, that if you live in a district, in the Washington District, for example, in one of these zones, and you, and you, and you, and you bike to work all of the time, and, and you walk over to get your coffee or your pizza or your burger. But you also, there are times when you, and maybe take the bus to get to City Hall. But then you need to go, you get some furniture at IKEA. I'm like, how am I going to do that? And having other options like a car share, in addition to VIA and everything else that we offer in West Sacramento, is essential, not, not, because nobody's going to use just one. All right, nobody's, there are very few cases where people only use car share to get around. Many car share users are also using their feet and their pedals and, and transit and other options too. So it's about, it's about finding and identifying and prioritizing those places where that makes, where the addition of car share makes all the difference in terms of making it possible for residents to, to live and thrive without having a car of their own. And so the, making the, the choices about where to go, where these, where these mini home zones are based on that. And that happens to align also with the disadvantaged community prioritization is, is very important. So I, I, I'm very pleased that GIG is here. It's, GIG has a strong reputation in the market and in the sector that is still, still evolving and still changing. And obviously, we're different from Sacramento, and so GIG will also learn about places like us through this partnership. But it's a, it's a great step forward. The, the price points are right. And again, thanks, Jason, and the team for, for making this lineup so well with our land use plans, our economic development plans, our economic inclusion plans as well as we, as, as we go forward. So Councilmember Ledesma?
Thank you. And I just wanted to tag on a little bit around that point is, point you made is, this council, for the most part, has been very supportive of our mobility options and creating the options for, for our residents to get around through the support of VIA, through our, our work with Yellow Bus. When we were in those of the COA Comprehensive Analysis and through the Jump Bike Initiative. And this is just the next step, and I'm super excited about this and glad staff jumped on this. You know, I, I, you brought up the point of, about how it is an essential city and it promotes the equity we're looking for. And I think that's just really important for us as a starting point, is that's where the need is. We'll see where it also, it can expand, and I think that really is the part, the part that, that I'm really interested in getting some reporting back, Jason, about where we're seeing usage, how we attract those who use it, right? So, so if there's a need, how, how will we know there's a need in Southport or another part of the western part of West Sacramento where maybe there's another hub, home zone there that might be established because of usage? We already seen through via that IKEA Center and Walmart are big places to go. And so I'm really interested to see how we use this and use the data we have from VIA and whatever else goes forward. So you also brought up that your communication and marketing, and that's going to, this is going to be really important as we go forward. Again, it, it's just letting the residents know through the GIG, the GIG share process and how they can get access to it. And again, I think it's just a wonderful opportunity. Thank you, staff, for working on it. And looking forward to kind of seeing this kick off and use more. Thank you.
The other thing I would just add on is, is on, is on the COVID situation and just Sloan and the GIG team. Thanks for your, that space, the. That's your, that is your, maybe you can mute Sloan. It sounds like there's a little bit of extra interference. The residents of our community and this through all over the country who depend on modes of transportation and mobility that aren't a private automobile have faced the most difficult challenges as a result of the COVID situation. And most of the policymakers making decisions about those modes are folks that own their own cars and drive to get around. So they've insisted on, you know, the highest standards for VIA and for, and for the transit and for car share, and which is appropriate, but we also need to assure that there are transportation and mobility options available for folks that don't own a private, that don't own a private automobile. And, and, and so the work that you've described, Sloan, in terms of what GIG has been doing, which is similar to what VIA has been doing and some of our other providers, is really important. But we also, we do have to understand that, that these alternatives, for some, they aren't the alternatives. They are the only option, and it's incumbent on us to make sure that, that they have the ability, residents who don't have a private car have an ability to get to work and to get to childcare and to do the things they need to do. And this is an essential part of doing that. So appreciate, appreciate your, your work in that space as well. All right, so that, we, we have any other, Councilmember Orozco, I know we can't, I can't see you. So do you, did you have comments as well?
Yes, thank you so much. I just want to express my excitement over this possibility for our city. Years ago, when we considered VIA, a lot of folks said, you can't do that. That sounds preposterous. A personal lift for West Sacramento only, how do we do that? And we've proven that this is possible, and not only is it possible, it's successful. The same argument was made for jump bikes and how they were going to, all the negative things that people wanted to put forth about how this program would work, and yet we see people of all walks of lives, ages, enjoying, you know, that, that mode of, of mobility. And it got people out of their homes and out of their cars and enjoying opportunities to, to transport around the city in different ways. And so, you know, when I first considered GIG and we see it in Sacramento and knowing that it's popular and operating in Oakland and Berkeley, the first thing I thought was, okay, I knew this was coming to West Sacramento at some point. But I mean, looking at transportation now as a service of getting people the option to save money for other things that are important in their lives and not having to buy a car and insure the car and store the car and clean the car and gas and fuel the car. You have a situation where there's, you pay for what you use, and it, it doesn't belong to you for fuel-efficient, affordable vehicles. And I agree with the council that, you know, this is one of those things that allows people to, you know, get around without having the expense of owning. And so I, I look forward to this possibility. I look forward to seeing this success, and I'm in full support of this, this part. And so I, I look forward to this possibility. I look forward to seeing this success and I'm in full support of this, this part.
All right, then. Councilmember Roscoe's had a motion on the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right.
I'll second.
So it's been moved by Councilmember Roscoe and seconded by Councilmember Ledesma that the consent agenda would be adopted, which is items three and four. Madam Court, would you please call the rule?
Mayor Protem Sandin?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldon?
Aye.
All right. So that motion carries and the consent agenda is adopted. That brings us then to item five, which is consideration of resolution twenty dash seventy six and West Sacramento Financing Authority Resolution twenty dash seventy seven. Authorizing the issuance of water revenue bond series twenty twenty, authorizing the execution and delivery of related documents and approving other related actions. Director Raper.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I do have a short PowerPoint, a half dozen slides or so, if you will allow me to share my screen here. Thank you. Okay. So assuming you can see my, my PowerPoint here, we are talking about issuing twenty twenty water revenue refunding bonds, convertible bonds. And so we're going to walk through what that looks like, what the savings looks like to the water fund and some of the considerations that the staff and financing team navigated to get to where we are today. So the prior obligation, the twenty twelve bonds, the original amount financed was just under forty two million. The outstanding amount from twenty twenty three to twenty thirty four, and that's after the call date, is just under thirty six million. Final maturity twenty thirty four. The call, call date's October first, twenty twenty two. So what we're looking at, well, we'll talk a little bit more underneath, I guess. The interest rates for those roam between four and five percent depending on the year. So the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of twenty seventeen eliminated our ability to issue tax exempt advance refundings. And advanced refundings are considered more than ninety days prior to the call date. Since the call date for these bonds are October first, twenty twenty two, this would be an advanced refunding. So we looked at a couple of different structures here. So we could have done a taxable advance refunding where the bonds are sold at a taxable interest rate to, to buyers. The bonds in that case may be sold as either a public offering, which is what we usually do when we develop the official statement and offer up the, the municipal bonds. Or they can be done as a direct placement, which is where we go directly to a bank. And, and they basically give us a loan to refinance or issue bonds to refinance our, our existing bonds. The structure that we're looking at is a convertible structure. So we've got taxable interest rate until the conversion date of October first, twenty twenty two. And then they convert to tax exempt interest rates. And these bonds we're looking at could be sold as a direct placement to a commercial bank or other lending institution. So in June, we had our municipal advisors and our placement agent request proposals from direct placement lenders. Prior to doing that, we kind of looked at both structures with their interest rates. I'll show what that looks like on the next slide and why we chose to go with a direct placement. But they sent that to about, to nine different lenders and we received two responses. One from Capital One and two from JP Morgan, slightly different structures. Staff selected the JP Morgan Chase, the middle option, two point six two percent taxable refunding convertible at the option of the city or the authority to the two point one four percent tax exempt rate on the call date, which is October first, twenty twenty two. We, there's an interest rate lock available. And in fact, if the, if the city council and the financing authority approve this tonight, we'll be locking that rate in tomorrow and issuing, closing by the end of the month. So we compared this convertible structure to a, a public offering of taxable advanced refunding, assuming the market rate, interest rates on June twelfth, that's when we were looking at our, our options and an A plus underlying rating with bond insurance and assurity for the reserve fund. And this slide shows you what those look like. The JP Morgan option that we are looking to go, go forward with nets annual, average annual savings of about three hundred and sixty one thousand, net present value savings, a little over four point two million and eleven point eight percent net present value savings, higher than the public offering would. And the public offering, by the way, takes quite a bit more staff time and financing team time to, to, a lot more goes into doing that. So the sort of easier option was also the option that provides the most savings for the city. And just as a, a, I think sort of good rule of thumb, if you are receiving over three, like between three and five percent of net present value savings, it's probably a good idea to move forward with your refinance. If it's over five percent, you really have to justify why you're not moving forward. And we're getting close to a twelve percent or proposing, projecting close to a twelve percent savings here. So this slide shows the estimated cash flow savings for each year, starting twenty twenty one. The first few years have less savings than the out years, but overall about three hundred, was it three sixty to three hundred and eighty thousand a year? That, the savings allows us to do a few things. One, it's more money we can put into our pay as you go capital program. Also, as we've been converting all of our accounts to metered rates, we're seeing a little bit more conservation. Certainly seeing some differences in this COVID environment. And so by, by freeing up some of those, some of that savings, some of that debt obligation each year, it'll allow us to better adapt to the changing revenues, just based on the changing economy and changing conditions. But in the out years, that could possibly allow us additional, additional room for, for more debt at some point. If there are big projects that we need to do, or in the meantime, it does give us additional cash on an annual basis for our pay as you go projects. So estimated costs of issuance are about a hundred and sixty five thousand. They're listed here because as part of the actions that we're asking the council to take tonight, you would be authorizing us to, to enter into agreements with our financing team to move forward and issue these bonds. There are three documents also on the agenda for your consideration. The first is the fourth supplemental installment purchase contract. It's an agreement between the city and the financing authority whereby the city agrees to make installment payments to the authority, which are then made to make the debt service payments on the bonds. The fourth supplemental trust indenture is between US Bank and the, the authority. And that agreement describes the terms and conditions of the refunding bonds and the role of the trustee. And the escrow agreement between US Bank and the authority provides for the deposit of funds. Since I had said we are refunding the amounts after the call date twenty twenty three, the existing debt is, it remains in place. And so the escrow agreement allows for the trustee to, or the escrow agent, excuse me, to make those payments on our behalf while we're paying for our new, new debt service. And that's typical with advanced refundings of any type. So with that, your recommended action tonight, you actually have two resolutions in front of you. One is the city council, which would authorize the issuance and sale of the refunding bonds, approve the form execution and delivery of the fourth supplemental purchasing contract, authorize the retention of bond council and disclosure council, and then authorize officers of the, the city to execute documents and move forward. The resolution for the financing authority is very similar. It would authorize the issuance and sale of the water bonds, approve the form and delivery and execution of all three of the agreements that are, that are on your agenda. And then authorize officers of the city to execute the documents and move forward with the bond issuance. So at that, at this point, I would love to open it up if you have questions. Hoping this, this owl might bring a laugh, but I'll open it up if you've got any questions.
All right. Thanks, Roberta. Although this one, this particular arrangement is slightly more complicated, thanks to the changes in the twenty seventeen tax bill. It's, it's consistent with our, our approach. It's been every time there is an opportunity to achieve some, some significant savings for our, our taxpayers or in this case, our water rate payers through restructuring, the, the way that our debt is handled. We've taken it and we've, we've, we have a great team led, led by Roberta and her staff, but also with our consultant partners as well to help us, help us put this together. So thanks for, thanks for your work bringing this forward. Councilmember Ledesma, can I turn to you first as our, as the council's leading financial, financial systems expert?
Well, I think it's, it's, it's a very basic concept here, Roberta. I, what you just explained on, on Cabaldon, about just taking the opportunity while the market's there to reduce sort of the type, the, the, the debt obligation here and kind of save money for the city. So I'm, I'm supportive of it. And, and no, you kind of just took the words out of my mouth about how, how this has been a practice. We've been, we've been very strategic about and very active about doing. So I just want to thank you for doing it. And, and no other questions. We're, we're actually voting on something called a Cinderella structure, which is a first.
Then let's try to do that before midnight. I don't see any questions. Madam Court, have we received any public comments on this item?
No, we did not receive any comments for this item.
Okay. Councilmember Guerrero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to clarify that what we obtained as far as revenue in this is that it'll go for improvements of water, of the water system. Is that, am I reading this correctly?
Sure. The savings that we experience by reducing our annual debt service payments flow back into the water system. So whether it's in the form of being able to cover, you know, reduced revenues by, because of increased conservation or to flow into financing our capital improvements of the system, it, it of course flows right back into the system.
Thank you.
Yeah. Robert, if you, if you wouldn't mind providing the, the last slide. I think Councilmember Burrow was on the telephone when you were covering the, the ways in which the revenues would affect the rate structures and, and demands and that sort of thing. I don't, I don't mean on the screen, but just that you can provide it separately. Okay. Any Councilmember Ledesma?
With that, I'll move. So do we have to take two votes here since it's two bodies or all one motion?
Let me, let's see if we can summon the ceiling fan. Mr. City Attorney, are you with us?
I am. I'm with you by phone because we've lost power on my block. Konstantin Baronov is on the call as well. Konstantin, do you, are there, are there, there's two resolutions, right?
Correct. One, one from the authority, one from the council. And but do we need separate, separate actions and votes or?
I don't believe so. And Konstantin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we can do a single motion.
Okay. Well, with that, I'll take that advice and move the recommended action.
I'll second that.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Ledesma and seconded by Mayor Protem Sandin. Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Yes, Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sandin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldon?
Aye. That motion carries. So thank you very much to Roberta and to the team for that great work. That then brings us to our, our, our final item, which is item six, which is update and actions on the city's COVID nineteen response. The Director of Emergency Services, Mr. Laurel, is finally, for the first time in forever, on a, on a much needed break. So we have a lighter item this evening, but Assistant City Manager and Assistant Emergency Services Director Amanda Berlin is here to make a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Yeah, tonight will be a shorter report. I just, we had the report published as of Friday, so I wanted to give a little bit of an update on our case numbers. Effective today, we have three hundred and thirty two cases in West Sacramento. There was two hundred and eighty eight as of Friday's report. So, and compared to the prior reporting of, of last week, we're up forty seven cases. Hospitalizations have also increased since Friday's report from thirty six to forty three in West Sacramento. Yolo County, the, the cases have also increased. As of Friday, there was a little over eleven hundred and now there's twelve hundred and twenty five. Hospitalizations have also gone up by twenty and deaths have gone up since Friday by four. As far as any significant events in the last week, on Friday, the governor announced plans for the schools in the state, plans for schools in the state centered on five key areas. Safe in-person school based on local health data. This includes keeping schools closed for in-person instruction in monitoring stat, in, in those monitoring status counties. It also includes some strong mask requirements for anyone in, in the school. Physical distancing requirements and other adaptations, regular testing and dedicated contact tracing for outbreaks at schools and rigorous distance learning. The governor on Monday also released new personal care services guidelines that will allow nail, nail salons, hair salons, barber shops, et cetera, to reopen their services by moving outdoors. As far as our emergency response goes, we have our current testing center out on Riverbank Road and that is scheduled to end on Friday when the operations move to Woodland with OptumServe. Next Tuesday, though, the city and the county will be working together to provide one more day of testing out at that site, at the Riverbank site. And we have all the test, test supplies and staff to, to, to run that operation for next Tuesday. Subsequent to that, the county has been in discussions with Elica Health Center to provide, to continue to provide free COVID testing at their site on, on Halliard Drive. That operation would be Monday through Friday, eight to five. We don't have an, an actual start date for that, but we're thinking it'll be sometime in August. And the plan is to have that testing continue through the end of the year. And that would be testing that's fully, the cost would be fully covered by the county, so there wouldn't be any ongoing cost to the city. Under Housing and Social Services, there was mentioned last week about the Project Home Key funding and the notice of funding availability did, was released for that late last week. And so we, our staff is having discussions with multiple motels about possibly utilizing that funding for extending the, the care and the services that have been provided through the, the Project Room Key. And in the meantime, that Project Room Key program is continuing to provide stability for the current clients. And that's about it for my report. Happy to turn it over to the council and answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Amanda. And I, I want to particularly acknowledge our staff and fire department and, 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 but, and especially the county and Elica for their work to, to assure that we sustain the availability for hundreds of tests in West Sacramento, even after the community testing center moves. So that was a, that was a lot of, I know a lot of work on everyone's part, but also everybody was, everyone was committed to it. And so especially to the county, to Supervisor Viegas and Supervisor Sandy and the whole team there. Even though testing, the testing situation statewide is very much a challenge in terms of the, the processing and the availability. And that's threatening the capacity of the public health system to monitor and to control the outbreak. The prospect of, of not having the level of testing that we have had in the community, losing that was, was a significant threat in our community. And so very much appreciate the work in that, in, in that area as well. And, and I know we're, we will also be one of the, the, the early applicants and the leaders in the, in the Project Home Key initiative. And Mr. Laurel has been working very much on that with our, some of our state partners. I have as well. I know others too. So we, we should be in a decent spot there. Obviously, the key issue and the Councilmember Ledesma focused on this last week is just negotiations between the, us and the county and, and in particular motel owners. And, and those negotiations tend to be a challenge. I mean, not for, not just here, but everywhere where some of the legacy, legacy motels of the pre-highway era have different valuations between owners and the public. So that's good, that's good. That will, that is, we're, we're not there yet, but at least the pieces are coming together for us to be able to build off of the success that we had, have had in West Sacramento as a statewide model in, in dealing with homelessness during the COVID crisis. And, and as this council has made it clear that one of our top priorities coming out of the crisis as we do is to assure that, that what we accomplished in terms of getting folks off the streets and into housing, that we do everything possible through the Home Key program, through our own permanent supportive housing project and others, to assure that we not only don't lose that progress, but are able to build on it on a going forward basis. So, and thanks to, to Amanda, to you for, for the updates in both of those areas. I should say also, we've asked the mayor pro team and I've asked as part of our weekly coordination sessions that we bring forward in the future to council, a study session or a similar workshop on sort of outdoor activities, playgrounds, other, 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 and approaches. As a council, as of course, where we don't control the orders around what people may or may not do, but we do have some response, we have some authority and responsibility when it comes to the operation and the availability and the openings of parks themselves and individual park facilities like playgrounds and others. And the science on, on this is not conclusive and it likely won't be for quite some time. But there are some policy issues to be considered and some science. Um, but there are some policy issues to be considered um and some science to be reviewed. And uh, and so we've asked that this come forward to the council for a workshop um at a, at a, at a date in the future in order to, to continue, especially given the, the, the significant interest as it is summer now, but also um with the, with the young people in our, in our community, uh, for the most part, not returning to physical instruction on campus that the, the, the need for and the demand for um uh public facilities um during, during the day and on the weekends, um, it's gonna, will only intensify it. All right. Councilmember Guerrero.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, today, um, Marcy Whitebuck released a report on um the challenges on to address early childcare education under COVID. And there were some really good, um, you know, researched uh information in there. And I'll pass that along to you, Amanda, so you can pass it along to Justine's and, and take a closer look at it. It was um very helpful just to be able to see what those challenges are and recommendations to overcome that. And as we look um to uh maybe possibly a special session to see what we can do to address any barriers. Um, and what I understand, the barriers are there is no funding for PP, um, PPE or sanitizing the childcare centers. And I think that's something that's critical. And not shouldering that cost on our early childcare education programs or providers. Um, they're taking out, you know, uh credit just to be able to make sure that childcare agencies are clean for children. Um, also on Project Home Key, I just had a quick question. Um, uh, whether or not we are utilizing the technical assistance that was being offered um under the um uh state's housing and um community development department. I think they were offering some technical assistance. Application, I understand, is going to be um a, a bit complicated. There's a lot of um areas that we just want to make sure we cover. Um, because the turnaround time um is going to be quick. There's going to be different rounds of funding. And uh, if we don't get it right, um, we just want to make sure we don't get it turned down and not, not, not be able to get around to um turning it around for um, you know, making any modifications. So if um we can just take advantage of that, or if you have already, um, it'd be good to know. And um, you know, uh, finally, just on the contact tracing, um, I've heard some concerns from um the, the community that um the lack of content tracing um or access to in case somebody um that they know has uh COVID um is, is a challenge. There's a lot of concerns that um because of the lack of testing, not only because of the lack of testing locally, um, the turnaround in the testing um as a result of that being like ten days and uh folks that, you know, um, were waiting, don't find out till after that fourteen day incubation period when they're um sheltering um in their home and then they go out and they could possibly actually have COVID and they find out too late and talk to other people. And then just following up with the contact tracing, that being a concern. Um, and uh, the, the additional two things I wanted to add was Supervisor Sandy. I just want to thank him for his work on reaching out to the um Latino um community and um working with Antonio. He's a new hire who's been translating all the materials into Spanish and working with our media. So um, the partnership that I've been working on with Sacramento um is coming to fruition. And so the regional partnership, because the um, uh, you know, essential workers are um primarily Latino. They're going to the farms, um, picking up our crops and they're also cleaning um uh offices and um hospitals and um they're just on the front lines. And so uh, I just want to be able to make sure that um they have the support and something I offered as, as advice, um, lending our resources in Los Angeles County. Um, when, if they have symptoms that they don't go to work and that they know um that they qualify for employment um benefits, so they can stay home. Because their concern is if they don't go to work, they don't get paid. And at this point, I think um they can and either they can either be intimidated or threatened um to continue work and they'll be going to work sick and infecting other people. So just uh working on that project with the county as well. Thank you. And just wanted to see if you could answer the question on Project Home Key.
Um, yes, my understanding that staff is taking advantage of any um webinars or any resources available to um you know, find out the information that, that they need to, to uh develop a competitive application. So.
I, I think we've, I, I think it's safe to say West Sacramento has never lost an HCD application uh for failure to be competitive. Um, sometimes we, we don't score quite as high as we would like, but that's usually because of the project. And I know HCD's been consulting with our city manager on the development of it. So uh, uh, but the, 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 I know the application's been out for just a couple of days, but uh very, I'm very confident we'll be in a good space if we can deliver the properties. And that's just a question of the motel owners, of us identifying um one or more motel owners that is uh prepared to, to negotiate in a reasonable way. So I don't, that will simply be up to that process to undertake. Uh, the other thing I would just note up here is that the, the, the hero, the Senate, US Senate is back in session. And uh, so uh, we're, we're, we have been working with them. Uh, right now there are, um, through the mayors, we've had discussions with Speaker Pelosi three times today um around the negotiations that are ongoing. Um, the, uh, the Senate's Senator McConnell's ver- original version, that what he put on the negotiating table included zero money for cities um in his, in his first round proposal. Um, uh, whereas the House version, as the council knows, is a uh two hundred and fifty billion dollars for cities. Um, uh, but uh, most signals are that we're, we're likely to even out of the Senate, get, get something. We're not sure what that dollar figure is, but it's a, it's a raging battle right now. And so uh, you know, any of you who have contacts or, or others in, in states other than California, uh, where, where the battle is really hot and heavy, um, this is really critical. Um, because our, uh, the, uh, uh, i- issues around uh childcare, issues around rent, like issues around um uh outdoor spaces and cleaning around virtually everything depends on having resources at the local levels to, to deal with it. And even though Sacramento got ninety million dollars and we might hope to get five hundred thousand dollars um from that same pot, LA County got tens or a hundred million dollars and we've gotten five hundred thousand dollars. Um, we're, we're just not in a place where we can uh meet the ba- the basic needs um of, of our community as a result. And this is a story that's being told all around the country. I'm in city after city after city after city. Uh, where eight, uh, something like ninety five percent of Americans live in cities um that weren't uh funded in that first round of the CARES Act um like Sacramento was. Um, so we really, we really need to win um in, in the Congress and with the president on getting the, on getting these funds in order to to, to, to address and grapple with some of these things go forward. All right. Any other questions on this item then?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, if ever else.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that the Project Home Key uh NOFA that we've been awaiting has been on the priority list for quite some time. Uh, our city manager has been working on positioning our city to best take advantage of this opportunity, should it arise. And fortunately, the NOFA didn't uh, wasn't released until recently, but uh, this is their topic of discussion in the executive commission on homelessness, which I'm a part of and previously to me, Mayor uh Pro Tem Sandin. Uh, it's also on the radars of our, our homeless coordinator, Mark Sawyer, and others who have been working very hard on making sure that West Sacramento is in a position to take advantage of the opportunity uh if it does arise. And so with that, I, I just wanted to reiterate that we have been on it well before it became a topic in this council class. Thank you.
All right. Thank Councilmember Roscoe. All right. So then council calendar. Uh, Ms. Berlin, anything on the calendar?
No, no updates on the calendar tonight. Thank you.
All right. And city manager report?
No, Robert. Thank you.
City attorney report? Let's, let's take that as a no report. Just basically, statistically, I think that's a pretty likely uh outcome. Uh, staff direction from members of the council. We have no future agenda item request. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Some move.
Okay. It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Sandin and seconded by Councilmember Orozco. That's the meeting stand adjourned. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Thank you. Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sandin.
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldon.
Aye. With that, the motion carries and the meeting is adjourned. Uh, good night, everyone. Have a safe evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.